For the Oatana City Council meeting to order for Tuesday, February 17th. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Burbank.
Here.
Rainey.
Here.
Svenby.
Here.
Dodson.
Here.
Okerberg.
Here.
Abraham.
Here.
Mayor Coontz.
Here.
We have all seven of the council and the mayor present.
Thank you. Please rise and join me in the, join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one mission under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight for the council meeting, and we do have one item, 3.11 on sale liquor permit is being pulled. So with that change, chairs entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve as noted.
Motion by Brent Svenby. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second. I'll go with Greg Schultz on the second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved. We will now move on down to the financial report, and I'll ask Greg to give a report on that.
Okay, total expenditures presented for approval tonight. Checks over $20,000 are $39,490 to the Steel County Auditor for the fourth quarter law enforcement center costs, $111,313 to the Southeast Service Cooperative, that is the February health insurance premium, $164,110 to Minowa Construction for the Brooktree Golf Course Bridge, other expenditures of $220,638, for a subtotal of $535,552. Add to that the February Section 8 payments of $56,350 for total expenditures presented for approval tonight, $591,903.15.
Thank you. You've all heard the report. What is your wishes?
Motion to pay the bills.
Motion by Kevin Rainey to pay the bills. Do you have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Nate Dodson. Any further discussion there? CNN, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved. We'll move on to consent agenda items, which are minutes of meetings, license and permit requests, board commission minutes, et cetera, all grouped into one motion. What is the council's wishes on this?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Nate Dodson to approve the consent agenda items. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'm gonna go with Brent on this one. Brent Svenby on the second, and any further discussion on any of these? CNN, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved. Moving down to action items, we now have 3.2.1, equipment purchase from Steel County pave and zip, the paver and zipper, and this will go to Kyle.
Good evening. Currently, the city of Oatana and Steel County jointly own an asphalt paver and an asphalt zipper. The asphalt zipper is the piece of equipment that comes in and chews up the asphalt before paving. Steel County expressed an interest in selling that equipment, as they don't believe they will be using it in the future. The city of Oatana elected to keep its portion, so we went back and found that we didn't have a agreement for, a signed agreement from when it was purchased. So we negotiated these terms that the city would agree that the value of the two items together was $70,000, and that for every hour that Steel County uses the paver, they would deduct $100 from that amount. So until they use 700 hours, or we sell it, and then we would owe them the balance. They have no intention to use the asphalt zipper. Staff recommends approval of this agreement.
Thank you, Kyle. Any questions from the council? Nate?
Do they anticipate the work that these will be used for would be contracted out then? Should, I mean, they can use them still, but would there be other projects?
I believe their-
Contract that workout?
Their intention is to contract that workout. They use it, you know, an example would be culvert replacements in rural areas where they are doing a fairly substantial patch, so they'll bundle them together.
Nate, Kevin?
Where is this equipment currently being stored at?
I don't know exactly where it is today, but it's either at the, I believe it's out at the county shop right now, but it'll be moved to our facility.
Just thinking, maybe we can make a swap. Some of the county equipment in our city shop can go back there.
Well, if we begin, become the owners of it, I'm sure we will do something like that.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be moved to our facility.
Okay. Questions from the council? What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Dave Burbank to approve. Do you have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Greg. Jeff Okerberg, any further discussion? CNN, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved. Moving down to board and commission recommendations, we got conditional use 1372, Kai Tola relocate house to 1014 East Rice Lake Street, and that will go to Troy.
The ordinance states that any structure over 500 square feet requires a conditional use permit in order to relocate it within the city limits. Perry and Deb Tycola are proposing to relocate a house, which is currently located on an ag lot west of Medford. The proposed house is a rambler. It's 28 feet by 38 feet, and would be set on a full basement. They also planning to put a two-stall attached garage onto the facility. They would replace the windows, put a new roof, and new sidings on it, as well as other improvements to help it fit in with the neighborhood, and it would end up being a four-bedroom, three-bathroom house. The code does require that a deposit of 20% of the projected cost be submitted to the city minus the lot and moving costs, and they've estimated those numbers to be $66,500, which means a deposit of $13,300 would be required to be submitted before any billing permits are issued. They do plan on having it completed by September 1st of this year. The code also requires that 10% of that forfeited amount would be kept if, for each day that it is late on that projected timeframe. And that's just to ensure that the neighbors know that the property is gonna get fixed up, and keeps, prevents a potential project from sitting there and not getting completed. That timeframe can be extended upon city council approval, so if they're in the midst of the project and they feel like they need more time, they can come back to the council and request that time be extended. The applicant did go around and talk to the neighbors beforehand, submitting pictures of what the house would be, and therefore, when we had the public hearing at Planning Commission, there were no neighbors or any opposition to the project. So staff would recommend approval, as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Troy. Any questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Kevin Rainey to approve. This is a request. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate Dodson. Any further discussion on it? CNN, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved also. Moving on to variance 1373, Steel Waseka Cooperative Group ground-mounted solar system, and back to Troy with that.
Yeah, so Steel Waseka is proposing a ground-mounted solar energy collection system on their property at 2411 West Bridge Street. The property is in an I-1 light industrial district, and the ordinance states the total surface area of the ground-mounted solar system cannot exceed 1,000 square feet. They are in fact requesting the system to take up about 2.4 acres, and this is part of their plan to have, it's a co-op, so their, members of their co-op could buy into the solar system. And there would be, it would be done in four phases. The first phase would be 212 feet long by 66 feet wide, solar garden, approximately 14,000 square feet in size, and they would do the phases as they are needed, starting in the northeast corner of the area that's shown on your site plan. Each of the gardens would contain 300 panels and produce roughly 123 kilowatts, and the panels would be grade level with a maximum of six feet in height, and our current ordinance allows them to go up to 25 feet in height. All other portions of the ordinance regarding the system would be met by the proposal. We did have a public hearing at Planning Commission, and Crown Court Conceal, which is the neighbor to the west, did have some concerns about possible glare from, from the system, and so there was much discussion about how to mitigate that. Steel Waseka Cooperative was willing to make sure that they didn't work in convenience by any glare, and so both sides agreed on a condition to be added to the approval from what was agreed upon at the Planning Commission, and that reads, "If glare from the solar garden becomes an issue, Steel Waseka Cooperative Electric will work with the city of Oatana to derive at a reasonable solution within a reasonable timeframe to alleviate the impact on neighboring properties. The issue shall be examined from a reasonably objective standpoint and not just based on one complaint. Potential solutions include, but are not limited to landscaping and fencing around the perimeter of the project." So both parties set with staff to come up with this condition. If this does become an issue, we would probably use the Planning Commission to represent the city in mitigating or mediating the solution between the two. We're not anticipating there to be a problem. These are mainly facing south, and this property is to the west, but they wanted this to be in the approval as a condition, just in case that were to happen. So staff would recommend approval based on the Planning Commission approval with that one condition that I just read to you as an added condition.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve the variance.
We have a motion to approve with the-
With the condition.
With the condition. Do we have a, by Dave Burbank, do we have a second to that?
Second.
I'm gonna go with Jeff on this one. Second by Jeff Okerberg, any further discussion on this?
I guess I just wanna thank Troy for clarifying that condition for me. I had some concerns with that condition earlier today, but now with your explanation, I think I'm okay with it. So thanks, Troy.
Okay. Thank you, Brent. The other comments. CNN, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved also. Moving on to ordinances, 3.4.1, second reading of ordinance 115, amended ordinance 827 regarding three and four-season porches, and that we go to Troy.
So we had the first reading of the proposed ordinance changes for three and four-season porches, and that is to allow three and four-season porches to be 20 feet off the rear lot line rather than 30 feet, which is required now, and it brings it in alignment with what decks are required now, with conditions being met, and those are listed in the ordinance. So staff would recommend approval of the second reading of the proposed ordinance change.
Thank you, Troy. Any questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Nate Dodson to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin Rainey. Any further discussion? This being ordinance, ask for roll call.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Svenby.
Aye.
Dodson.
Aye.
Okerberg.
Aye.
Abraham.
Aye.
We have all seven ayes.
This has been approved, and this is the second reading, so it is ready to go. Now moving on down to the first reading of ordinance 2-15, amend section 317 to stormwater management, and this will go to Kyle.
Good evening. As we discussed at our work session a few weeks ago, the city is part of our municipal separate storms, where MS4 permit is required to update our storms who are ordinance for stormwater management. By that permit, we had one year from our time that started last March, so we're taking it down to the wire here, but we made, basically we followed all the minimums that were required of us by the MPCA and the MS4 permit, and did our best to make this as least impact to the community as we could. There will be considerable costs and additional staff time associated with this, but like I said, we're trying to meet the minimums required. And they will answer any specific questions.
Thank you, Kyle. Any questions from the council? What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Nate Dodson to approve. Do we have a second to that? Second by Jeff Okerberg. Any further discussion here?
Les, I just wanna say thanks, Kyle, for putting this together. I can't say I'm overly happy with it. I think we're getting something rammed down our throats, and, but like you say, there's really no choice, so.
It's a mandatory approval. So, thank you. And with that, I ask for a roll call.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Svenby.
Aye.
Dodson.
Aye.
Okerberg.
Aye.
Abraham.
Aye.
All seven ayes.
Thank you. This has been approved also. Moving on to resolutions, 3.5.1, resolution 2115, Accept MinDOT Official Office of Aeronautical Granted Agreement for Pavement, and this will go to Troy.
We had a couple of maintenance projects out at the airport that we submitted for a grant last year. One was cracked ceiling that was completed as part of the hangar area designated as taxi lane A. Some of that work will be continued here this spring as well, and that was to be, to follow our maintenance, as indicated in our 2013 MinDOT pavement evaluation. We also had some work done on the hangar bifold doors. They required the machining and installation of six new sheave wheels and the seals to replace the existing hardware that was badly worn. We also installed some new panic door safety hardware and lighted exit signs to meet billing code requirements. Both projects totaled $17,773. It was eligible for an 80% grant from MinDOT, which would cover $14,219, which would leave our local share of $3,554. So we have a grant agreement here in the packet, and staff would recommend approval of resolution authorizing the acceptance of the MinDOT grant agreement for payment, pavement maintenance, and hangar repairs.
Thank you, Troy. Questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Greg Schultz to approve this. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion here? CNN, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved also. Moving down to 3.5.2, resolution 2215, plat approval for Petman addition, and this will go to Troy.
Mark and Nancy Petment, Petman, live at 2785 St. Paul Road and are proposing the two-lot plat. They're within a single-family district. The total property is about six acres, and they're looking just to split off the property around the house so that they can sell the house. The remainder of the property is currently vacant, and the Petmans would retain ownership of that. The additional right-of-way for St. Paul Road, which is not currently platted, would be included in this plat. It would be the 33 feet from the center of the road to the east. There's also a stubbing road that comes in off Lee Street into the property, and again, that would not change as the property is not being developed. There are, well, there is one accessory structure that straddles the proposed lot line, and the applicants have agreed to remove that by August 30th, given the winter conditions we have now. And then there is also an outstanding deferred assessment on the property of $28,252.40. We did have a public hearing at the Planning Commission, and we had no one at the Planning Commission opposing this project. There were a number of conditions placed as part of that approval, one of which is the outstanding deferred assessments on the property, plus interest shall be settled with the city prior to the recording of the final plat. And I know Mark Walbrand has been working with the Petmans on that, and I think I'll turn it over to Mark to comment on that.
The Petmans had some communication with Greg Krujki, and they proposed to pay off the assessments so that they will all be satisfied at the time that the contract for deed on the lot that they've sold is fulfilled, which is three years hence. They've delivered their check to the city for $10,000 tonight. They have agreed to pay an additional $5,000 within six months of today, an additional $15,000 by the end of the year, December 31 of this year, and then if not sooner paid, the balance would be paid by December 31 of 17. Going forward, the interest up till now has been at the rate of 7%. Some of these are old assessments. Going forward, we would recommend that the interest rate be 3.5%. And they've also agreed to provide the city with an assignment of their contract for deed, so that the city would have a lien, if you will, on the vendor's interest to secure the payment. So they have signed this, and it would be our recommendation that the council adopt it.
Adopt it as presented.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. And I see Mark is here. You have, you agree with everything?
Yes, we do. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you. And with that, what is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Nate to approve.
Second.
Second by Kevin Rainey. Any further discussion here? CNN, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved. Thank you.
Les?
Yes?
That would be a remiss if I didn't say how nice the Petmans have been to work with, not just on this project, but on the other projects as well that have affected their property. They're a fine example of citizens.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Mark. And with that, we'll move on to miscellaneous items authorized, 2015 overlay project for 20th Street Northeast from St. Paul Road to Bigelow, and that we go back to Kyle.
Good evening. In order to let bids for a project over $100,000, we need council approval. This is included in the 2015 CIP. It includes an overlay on 20th Street Northeast from St. Paul Road to Bigelow Avenue, and 12th Street Southeast from Truman to Lincoln. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Troy. Kyle, any questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Greg Schultz to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Brent Svenby. Any further discussion there? CNN, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved also. Moving on down to 3.6.2, dedication of youth baseball field as Raymond Trulson Jr. Field at J.C. Park, and this will go to Chris.
Thank you, Les. Tim Trulson is here, along with some members of the Huskies bullpen, so I would ask them to come up and address the council.
Good evening. On February 9th, our last park board meeting, the Husky bullpen came forward with request to dedicate J.C. Field to Raymond Trulson Jr., and it was approved by park board, so I'm gonna introduce Wade Westfall from the bullpen club to say a few words as well.
Thank you.
The naming of the field for Raymond Trulson Jr., obviously you guys all know, familiar with him, and the lighting of the field, when we were thinking about this four and a half, five years ago, never would have even gotten off the ground if it wasn't for Raymond and his coming to us and donating his own personal money to get this, this whole project off the ground that just snowballed into working with Major League Baseball and the Baseball Tomorrow Fund and different organizations throughout, you know, the country, really. And he started the whole thing, and I wish we could have done this when he was still here. You know, it, it's something I wanted to do when, you know, he was still around. Obviously, you can't plan for those things, but I think it would be a great thing. He has always been really, really involved with the J.C.'s and J.C. Park, and if we could name that after him, I think he would really appreciate it.
Thank you. I think it would be a fitting honor to him.
So do I. His son will be playing there, or his grandson will be playing there this summer. You know, if we do a dedication, and then he played on that field.
Yes, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Wade. Questions from the council? What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Kevin Rainey to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Brent Svenby. Any further discussion here? CNN, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved, and congratulations, and good luck with it. Look forward to seeing that. With that, we'll move on to public comments, and if anyone wishes to speak on any issue not on the agenda, please come to the microphone and sign in. Ask you to limit it to two minutes, so whoever wants to go first.
I don't know how many of you guys read this city spot in Public Utilities thing, but I have found what I consider a significant inaccuracy. City of Oatana 2015 budget, the city of Oatana provides many services to the cities of, citizens of Oatana. The city of Oatana provides full police and fire protection, the construction and maintenance of streets and other infrastructure, stormwater management, library services, building inspection, economic development, airport, recreational activities, including the tennis and fitness center and Brooktree Golf Course, and maintenance of parks and trails. The city's 2015 general fund budget is a tad under 17 billion, a million here, sorry. I didn't slip. It'll be this without, calculate for inflation over 20 years. But anyway, what I'll do is pick out one particular sentence here. The city of Oatana provides full police and fire protection, and there's a word that's missing here, partial construction and maintenance cost of streets and infrastructure. Why the word partial? Because with major street repairs and sidewalk repairs, the property owners are assessed more taxes, as one of our council members here can attest to. It can be big time. I'll quit there, unless I got another minute.
Half a minute.
Half a minute. Okay. For those that say we can't afford full cost of construction, maintenance of streets and other infrastructure, I wanted to point out we're spending money for maintenance of parks and trails, and I'm looking here on a recap on today's minutes or in today's agenda. We've got $164,110 for mineral construction, Brooktree Golf Course Bridge, and we also have $111,313 for insurance premiums. And you say, wow, you know, Brooktree Golf, that's coming from some other grant money somewhere. I remember when I was running for city council, there was somebody else that was running for the same position that asked the question, how come these health insurance premiums were, we were in a working study session, health insurance premiums, and he, this one gentleman said, how come they're so high? Never found an answer. Anyway, thank you. Just my-
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? CNN, we'll move on to council comment, and we'll start with Greg Schultz.
All I wanna say, I think it's a great idea. We're gonna name the J.C. Baseball Park after Raymond. We all know Raymond and what a great guy and what a big heart he had, and I think it's a great, great thing, so that's all.
Thank you, Greg. And Dave?
I would concur and agree with Greg, and I don't have any other news from Ward 3.
Thank you. Kevin?
I would agree Raymond had many passions in life, and, and two of them were obviously the J.C.'s and youth activities, and very fitting that a youth baseball field be named after Raymond.
Thank you, Kevin. Brent?
I just agree with what's been said so far, and it's a great honor for Raymond's family.
Thank you. Nate?
I can't add to that.
Okay. Jeff?
No comment.
No further comment.
No further comment.
And we go to Mayor Tom.
I agree with what's been said, and it's gonna be very nice to see Raymond's picture on the plaque. Can I get it all done?
Yes. Chris?
Just a couple of announcements. We're gonna have our coffee with the council this Saturday, February 21st, from 8:30 to 9:30 a.m. at the Hy-Vee Deli. We invite everyone to come and just have a cup of coffee with the council, myself, and just talk about whatever you'd like to. Also, the library's having a birthday. This February 22nd, this Sunday, I believe, the library is 115 years old, and to celebrate, we're gonna have some treats donated, of course, down at the library in the afternoon from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m., and we just wanted to invite the whole community to come down and enjoy some treats and celebrate with us.
That's on the 22nd?
Yes, sir. 22- Yes, sir. 20th, February 22nd. Okay?
Okay, Tom?
One other thing I'd like to say is my compliments to the robotics team at the high school. They're doing a standoff tonight. They're going up to Duluth to compete in the competition. That involves 40 kids. What great leadership that shows and what great development of a robot that can go out and compete in competition. So good luck to the robotics team.
Thank you, Tom. And from my standpoint, working with Raymond over the years, I worked with him at Wangars for many years, probably knew him for over 40, and I know his heart has always been in the J.C.'s and kids. So to me, I think it's a very fitting tribute that the Ball Diamond is named after him, so again, thank you. And with that, we'll look for a motion for adjournment.
And make a motion at the city council meeting, 17th of February, be adjourned.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
I can't top that's off the second.
You'll just second, okay. With that, I'll have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.